All right, we're good to go.
Okay. I call this regular meeting to order at 6:43 PM. Pledge allegiance by Councilmember Harrington.
Thank you, Mayor. Please rise, place your right hand over your heart, and repeat with me. The case flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag. Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, roll a call, please.
Vice Mayor Ding.
Here.
Councilmember Harrington.
Here.
Councilmember Minchaka.
Here.
Councilmember Rivera.
Here.
Councilmember Wu.
Here.
Closing section report. Our city attorney will now give the closing section report from the special meeting hold on today at 5:30 PM.
Certainly, Mr. Mayor, the, uh, Mr. Vice Mayor. The board met in closed session to discuss the performance evaluation of the city attorney. That's me. The city attorney received the report. No reportable action took place. Mr. Vice Mayor, that concludes the report.
Thank you, Chief. Peace. All right, we will now have the same announcement from our chief city clerk.
Tonight's meeting is live streamed on cable channel three and our online platforms. Public comments may be presented in person or emailed to cityclerk@sgch.org and will be read for up to three minutes each. Comments received after the end of the public comment section will be forwarded to the city council after the meeting. If you wish to address the city council, we request that you please complete a speaker's card, which is available in the lobby and at the front podium, and hand it to city clerk staff in the front of the auditorium. When speaking, please state your name for the record. If you wish to be added to the distribution list to receive city council agendas, please email your request to cityclerk@sgch.org.
First item. Through the agenda order, staff requests that item 4C material may be removed from tonight's agenda due to a like on the online agenda to an incorrect document. It will be brought back for council consideration on the March 15 regular meeting agenda. Is there a motion approved for the end order as so amended?
Uh, move.
I'll second.
Okay, motion made by Councilwoman Minchaka and second by Councilmember Harrington. Chief City Clerk, please take the vote.
Councilmember Harrington.
Aye.
Councilmember Minchaka.
Aye.
Councilmember Rivera.
Aye.
Councilmember Wu.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ding.
Aye.
Motion passes by a vote of five zero.
Next item, please.
Presentation, item A, Foothill Unity Center Incorporated, presentation about their community organization. Tashara Taylor, Chief Executive Officer, will make the presentation.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, council members and city staff. My name is Tashara Taylor. I'm the Chief Executive Officer with Foothill Unity Center. Today, we will come, we have our executive team with us, and we'll give a short presentation. We'll give a short or quick presentation about who we are. We just want to introduce ourselves to you. Do I just say next slide as we go through the slides? Okay. That is who we are, those are our names, and each of our executive team will introduce their names when they speak. Next slide, please. So who are we? We are neighbor helping neighbors. We're a multi-service agency primarily of food country. However, we have multiple services, social services that we provide in the San Gabriel Valley area. We're a provider of primarily integrated services to help individuals and families to move out of poverty and into a place of economic security or stability. Next slide, please. Our core programs and how we do so is, are the food distributions, which we have on a weekly basis at two of our sites, one in Monrovia and one in Pasadena. We have our health services program, which brings access of health care services, as well education and navigation to the community through our health services program. We also have housing and homeless services that we provide to the community, and so that's more prevention work, motel vouchers, as well just helping people to find stability regarding housing and keeping people from falling into homelessness. And we have our job development program, and all of our programs are supported through our case management strategies, as well we build capacity with volunteerism, and we have a large volunteer base. Next slide, please. Our mission is to help neighbors in crisis to attain self-sufficiency by partnering with the community and using our resources wisely. We have a service area of 12 cities, and they're listed there on the, on the slide. However, through this pandemic, we have been serving more than the 12 cities. As we all know, people, there has been a great need and rise, and might continue to be with inflation rates. So we are being available to the community whether they're in our service area or not. And again, that's from our two sites that we have, one in Monrovia, one in Pasadena. Next slide, please. So we look and focus on these conditions of poverty, right? Hunger, homelessness, housing insecurity, poor health, lack of opportunity, and loss of hope. What we know is that 27% of families lack enough resources to meet the basic needs as measured before the pandemic. Just the basics. Next slide, please. And just a few stats, or food assistance itself is no longer a safety net, it's become a necessity to make ends meet. And so giving a few stats, one in five people were food insecure before the pandemic. However, we have seen that number grow greatly. The cost of housing in just this area long is more than three times the national average, and the scarcity of affordable housing becomes more evident on a daily basis. Next slide, please. You'll hear from...
Hello, I'm Raina Martinez. I'm the Chief Development Officer. It's great to be here this evening. And going over this slide, we have, we served in 2021 245 unduplicated San Gabriel, the city of San Gabriel households. And these households accessed 15,875 services from our core programs. Now, our core programs, as you can see, they included access to services including back-to-school supplies, as we have a back-to-school distribution event, which gave them the basic supplies to have a great school year, to start off the year on the same basis as other other classmates. We also had bag lunches for unhoused population, and we have case management strategies, dental care, health, health services, education, and referrals. We also had groceries, diapers. We had our holiday event, which was with toys and gifts and needed items. So, and we have our strategies for the unhoused and working with our unhoused population as well, as well as job development, and we have volunteer services. But as you can see on the chart that we have here, one of the biggest access services was for our health services, and this could be, this is a variety of things, including referrals, navigation assistance, as well as dental, we had dental care, special events and education events, and in the health service and case management through our health services staff. And then you'll see for access to diapers, we have food services on our weekly food distributions as well. So we are serving a great deal of your households in the city of San Gabriel and meeting the needs of their, of the community.
Next slide, please. Good evening. Good evening, everyone. My name is Rainy Sultan. I am the Chief Financial Officer for Foothill Unity Center. We're a nonprofit in San Gabriel Valley area. We serve 13 cities, and our revenue, total income is about $8 million a year. Four million out of the eight million is in kind donation, majority are food that we distribute to all the people that it needs. The other four million dollars coming from the grants, foundations, individuals, business and corporation. Our functional expenses, it's very efficient. Every one dollar that we received, 90 to 97 cents are going to our program, and the rest will go towards the fundraising and admin. We purchased $6 million building to, so we can help more people in San Gabriel Valley area, so it helps us, helped us a lot during the COVID. We can do physical distancing, food distribution, so the people just come in, open their trunk, and we can just fill in the trunk with the food. So out of this $6.2 million building, we still owe about 1.2 million, so we do the fundraising also, so we can own the, the building as soon as possible. Thank you so much.
Next slide, please. My name is Mike Antonesi. I'm the Chief Administ, Chief Administrative Officer here at Foothill Unity Center. Thank you very much, Council, for having us here today. We're here to because we've been around for 42 years, serving the community, and we've been serving your constituents. We serve this city, and we do it very quietly, but we want you to know that we're here. So I'm here to tell you how you can help. We've already told you how we help. So just a couple of ideas of how you can help and how your citizens can help get the job done for this city and this community. You might consider doing what other cities have done and making Foothill Unity Center a line item in your budget when it comes to social services and community care. We have the ability to, because of our placement and our access to food and services, to take the money that, that we are given and multiply it to the extent that we get things at pennies on the dollar from LA Regional Food Bank and from other resources. We would love for you to be able to pass along some of your state, local, and city grants that you have to us so that we can underwrite our staffing expenses. Food and services are only as good as, as much, are only as available if we have the staff to do it, and staffing is the largest expense in our budget. Promote Foothill Unity Center on your, in your community as a resource to your citizens. That's why we're here today. We're here for those that are on, on the TV, listening, and watching us so that you know that foothillunitycenter.org is a resource for you to go to, and all you need to do is take a look at what we do and show up at our facilities, and we will provide. And lastly, encourage community members and those that you know in your circle of influence to volunteer and to donate to Foothill Unity Center. We have a staff of 37 people, and we serve about 10,000 families a year. So without our dedicated volunteers and groups and organizations and churches and schools and, and businesses that come and do their volunteer hours with us, we cannot do what we do. So thank you for giving us an opportunity to speak to you today. We truly cannot do the work that we have been called to do without your support, and we thank you. Any questions for us?
I have a quick question. First of all, just to let you know, I have quite a few supporters out there, and one of your volunteers asked me to stop by, so you have a great community, lots of people are being serviced, and thank you. Didn't realize how many were from San Gabriel. My question is, perhaps... Perhaps you can send us to our city manager so the council could get the cities that are donating and how much they're donating. We as a council are still having those conversations about social services and what does that look like, but I would be very interested to see how much you're getting from other cities, just as a good talking point for us as council. Great, thank you.
Thank you, Foothill Unity Center. Thank you, the presentation. So we know your organization, I know for the community service 42 years, also do the, like, 270, our family in the city of San Gabriel. Thank you, do the wonderful job. So yeah, pass around the, your, the organization, the information to the, our city manager we can study more, okay? So see what we can help. I think definitely a community want to help this kind of, kind of things. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Next item, please.
Police Department Employee Introductions. Police Chief Harris will make the presentation.
Good evening, members of the council, members of the community. Welcome, welcome back. This is our second one live, and we're so glad to be here. It's a very important day for us in the police department as we get an opportunity to introduce some of our newest employees. Unfortunately, because of COVID, we had to go a couple of years without introducing folks, and normally we have it at our council chambers, and we get a chance to get up and close and personal and meet our new family members. So we hope we do it justice today, and we're going to introduce a few folks to you right now. So if I could have our, some of our newest employees come out on stage, we have our two newest volunteers, our newest CSO, and our two newest dispatchers here to introduce to you tonight. What a crew. And I'm going to read the introductions. First, we have volunteer Carla Safi. Carla's a resident of San Gabriel, has been for 22 years. She's employed at Coolidge Elementary as a yard duty staff for the past 10-plus years and a volunteer at our police department. She became a volunteer to help serve the citizens of this community, and she holds deep respect for our officers and staff who work hard to keep our city safe place to live. Volunteering at the police department is her way of giving back, not only to her community, but to be positive and a support to the department. Carla Safi. Next to her is our next volunteer, Jackson Salinas, my man. Jackson Salinas is 22 years old and is on the autism spectrum and a proud employee at Disneyland. He wanted to become a volunteer with the police department because he and his family have always been supporters of law enforcement. His maternal grandfather was a detective for the Montebello Police Department for 15 years, and he is an absolute asset to what we do at the police department. Jackson Salinas. Important for everybody to understand that our volunteers really do come out and give the best of themselves for this community. It's the true meaning of community service. Both of these folks come and help us get the things done that need to get done behind the scenes that not everybody knows are necessary in running a police department. So we are very glad to have them here, and they are stalwart representatives of the community, and we hope to get more volunteers to join them. Next up, we have our CSO, Community Service Officer, and his name's Brian Wu. Brian was raised in, in, excuse me, Carson by Mary and Billy. He is the oldest of two children with a younger brother. He recently worked for the 2020 World Series Champions, the Los Angeles Dodgers. Go Dodgers! Yes! Where he was a part of the corporate security and guest services management team. Growing up, he always wanted to work in the government sector and serve his community. He has proudly achieved that goal, being here with us. Brian is a family man who enjoys sports, theater, traveling, eating amazing food, and making lifelong memories with his loved ones. He is happily married to his wife Melanie, who's a deputy district attorney for the Los Angeles County, for Los Angeles County, and together they have two sons. Proudly present to you Officer, Community Service Officer Brian Wu. Our community service officers do that. They service all the things that we need to get done to make sure we can serve the community. So they are working with evidence, they are working behind the scenes with administrative functions, they're doing a lot of things that, again, that, you know, are the undertones and the undercurrents of running a police department that you don't always get to see. But he performs his job admirably, and we're glad to have him. Next up are our two dispatchers. Dispatcher Raquel Aranda. Raquel was born and raised in San Gabriel. Welcome, Gaberlino. By her mother Luna, I'm sorry, Irma. She is an alumni to McKinley, Jefferson, and Gaberlino. She has over 16 years of customer service experience, where she has worked at Best Buy in Pasadena, Dodger Stadium, and as a secretary of the labor, I'm sorry, for labor and delivery at Beverly Hospital. She is a mother to her 11-year-old son, who's our newest young Gaberlino, and who attends Jefferson Middle School. Raquel enjoys outdoor activities and visiting amusement parks with her son and going to concerts with her boyfriend and friends. She has always left a, or felt a purpose to work in law enforcement and feels honored to be a dispatcher for the city she grew up in, and we welcome her, Raquel. Last but not least is dispatcher Cassie Gallardo. Upon graduating high school, Cassie became a lifeguard and a swim instructor, and she did, for, what she did for six years while earning her degree in psychology. I'm afraid of that, she might try to diagnose me or something. She became interested in criminal psychology and wanted to apply her knowledge to the field of law enforcement. Being a precious resident of San Gabriel City, another Gaberlino, she knew she wanted, excuse me, to give back to this community, and she has always wanted to apply the skills she picked up over the years through work in school to a career that is involved with providing outstanding service to community members. Cassie enjoys hiking, spending time outdoors, and swimming among many other things. Most importantly, she cherishes the moments she gets to spend with her family and friends, and certainly with her new friends here in San Gabriel. So we present to you Cassie. So these are our newest folks that we hope are going to stay here for quite some time, put a lot of years in here, and maybe sometime happily retire from this city and provide years of service and get years of benefit, and we're so glad to have them here. They're all really toeing the line and getting things done. So one more round of applause for these young folks. All right, if I could have council come up, so we can get a picture with our new folks. We're just going to get in and make it work. All right, folks, next up, we have our sworn police officers, the newest people that we've hired, gone through the academy and are now out in the field protecting you and the citizens of this, of this proud city. We're going to call them out. We have Officer Kevin Watson, Officer William Lazzaro, and Kevin Tran. Kevin Tran. All right. All right, we'll start with Officer William Lazzaro. William grew up in the San Gabriel Valley. His hometown is the city of Duarte, where he lived for over 20 years. With him today is his wife Kelly Anne. She's backstage, she'll be coming out here shortly. They met in 2005, and she became completely obsessed with him. That's probably his version and not hers, but she is here, so we're good. All right, she would not leave him alone, so they got married in 2014 and had a bunch of babies somewhere in between. Good for them, good story. He is a proud father of four children who are also here with him today, and therefore he is not working as a full-time cop. When he's not working as a full-time cop, he's working as a full-time dad. William has been with the San Gabriel Police Department for exactly 13 months as of today, and he is happy to be a member of his new family and looks forward to helping anyone he can each night that he comes to work. Later, his wife Kelly will come out and pin his badge on. Next up, we have Officer Kevin Tran. Kevin Tran was born on May 29, 1994 in Bakersfield, California, and at the age of 11, he and his family moved to the San Gabriel Valley, where he was raised by his mother, Mae, along with his three siblings, Tony, Lynn, and Fiona. He graduated from Gaberlino in 2012, and shortly thereafter, he attended Pasadena City College to study administration of justice. As he gained interest in law enforcement, he decided to join the San Gabriel Police Department Explorer Program in 2014, and he was outstanding in that capacity. In 2018, Kevin became more involved in the city and the community as a parking enforcement officer contracted with the city in both Pasadena and San Gabriel. Kevin was hired as a police recruit in July of 2021 and graduated from the San Bernardino County Sheriff's Academy in December of 2021. He enjoys spending time with his family and friends, and he also loves traveling and exploring new places. He won't be able to do that for quite some time because he's the newest guy we have, so he's going to be working quite a bit. But he also plans on furthering his education by obtaining his bachelor's degree. Kevin would like to take the time to thank his family and friends for supporting him throughout this career choice, and without them, he wouldn't be able to get through the challenges that he's experienced. He's excited to be able to serve this community, the one that he grew up in, and today, shortly, his mother Mae will pin his badge on. Finally, we have Officer Kevin Watson. Kevin Watson was born on May 26, 1992, to his loving parents, Virginia and Kevin Watson, Sr. He has two beautiful sisters, Summer and Megan, and his father devoted 26 years to the San Gabriel Police Department before retiring in 2014, and has always been a huge inspiration to him. He knew he wanted to follow in his father's footsteps one day, and he did just that. After graduating from Hispania High School in 2010, Kevin joined the United States Navy. The Marine Corps is part of the Navy. The best part, ooh rah! And he dedicated nine years to the Navy and promoted to the rank of Chief Petty Officer before honorably discharging from the military in January 2021. Thank you for your service. A few months before leaving the military, he applied to become a police officer for the city of San Gabriel, and after months of waiting, he was thrilled to discover that he had been hired and was sent to the Rio Hondo Police Academy in February of 2021. He graduated Police Academy in August of 2021 and has been working diligently for this city ever since, and tonight it'll be his mother, Virginia, pinning on his badge. What we'd like to do is now do the swearing in and the oath. If I could call up our city clerk, Sharon?
Okay, please raise your right hand, and you will pay after me. Aye, and state your name.
Aye. Kevin Watson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will defend...
That I will defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true allegiance.
That I will bear true allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I enter into this obligation freely.
That I enter into this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully...
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
All right, first out will be Kevin Tran's mom, Mae, to pin on his badge. Nothing like a little stage fright, but we'll be all right. Nothing like a little stage fright, but we'll be all right. Next out will be Kellyanne, the wife of William Lozaro. They've been practicing this. It's okay to hug up here, guys, we're good. And next up will be Virginia, the mom of Mr. Kevin Watson. Before I invite the council up to take photos, we have a legacy child up here since his father was here for quite some time, and he's going to do the speaking for the group. Kevin Watson.
Hello, everybody. My name's Kevin Watson. My father, Kevin Watson, Sr., retired from the San Gabriel Police Department, spent 26 years there. I would just like to thank the city of San Gabriel for allowing other officers and myself to serve the community, so thank you.
If we can invite the council up for photos, that'd be great. And then you'll be taking your picture with them first. Same place over there, I'm with them. Yeah, individuals, uh huh. Go ahead and slide down a little bit where she can get a good picture. I got a new career, I'm a stage director. All right, we'll replace Kevin and his mom with Mr. Lozaro and his mom, I'm sorry, and All good? All right, thank you. We'll replace the Lozaro clan with the Watsons. All right, again, one more time, round of applause for our new folks. We expect them to be around for quite some time, so if you see them in the community, feel free to come up and speak to them. They will certainly reach out and speak to you, and if they don't, feel free to call
Yeah, next item, please.
Proclamation for Women's History Month. Vice Mayor Deng will make the presentation.
Wow, yes, I really appreciate staff, city staff that give it to us every month have the like, different months, like last month, it's Black History Month, this month is Woman History Month. So I, it's really want to like appreciate the, thanks all the, especially today's woman coming. I saw the like, a priest, the last three, the priestman, they have the mother, wife, it's really like we say, if we use the man you're successful, that's Chinese meaning, okay? Behind it definitely have like, the quiet, the woman to support it. So I, it's really like appreciate this, the woman history for, history for our months to like let the community like respect out the woman, no matter which one, where the your Anthony group, okay, what's your age, especially our council, I have two women here too, right? So before, we say that, I say that like behind it have the, have the, the woman to quiet, to support them, but instead of the, but these two councilwoman, it's also independent service our, the community, I really appreciate. So tonight, I think after I announce this proclamation, I will be talking to my wife and my mother too. Okay, it's thanks they gave me the like, support quietly to support me and then let me serve the council member, okay?
Vice Mayor, could I say a few things before you start your proclamation?
Okay.
Just real briefly, I wanted to also welcome Councilwoman Karina Rivera, because it is nice that her first meeting, and here we are, recognizing Women's History Month, so welcome.
Thank you.
Councilwoman. Also, just to let people know that there is a theme every year, and the theme for this year is women providing healing, providing hope. And the theme is about recognizing caregivers and frontline workers during this ongoing pandemic, and also recognizing the thousands of millions of ways that women, women of all cultures have provided both healing and hope throughout the history. And I thought it was kind of interesting just to note in our city alone, how the role of the women have changed. I'm currently the president of the Kiwanis Club. The Kiwanis Club is the oldest service club here in San Gabriel, and it started in 1927, we're approaching our 100 years, but not until 1987 were women allowed to join the Kiwanis Club. And so, you know, it took a while, but we're there, and now our membership is over 50% women. So I just thought it was kind of, it's a good time to share that because although it might, for some people, this might seem like, well, why do we need to do it? We need to do it. I mean, we, there's so many ways that we need to continue to make those strides, and I'm just proud that I'm part of that, either being here at the dais or being president of the Kiwanis Club and one of the few women that have been presidents. So thank you so much to council, to city, to city management to take the time to recognize Women's History Month. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Menchaca. That's a good example, okay. The American woman have served and continue to serve our country courageously in the military, and where is, as American woman have been leader, not only in the security of their own rights of the suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, the industry labor movement, the civil rights movement, and the other movement, especially the peace movement, which created a more fair and just society for all. Now therefore, I, Tony Ding, Vice Mayor of the San Gabriel, City of San Gabriel, California, on behalf of the city council, Councilmember John R. Harrington, Denise Menchaca, Karina Rivera, and John Wu, do hereby proclaim March 2022 as a Women's History Month in the city of San Gabriel, and invite everyone to recognize, recognize this month to celebrate the contribution of the American woman. Thanks. Oh, that's March 1, 2022. Here, it's proclamation, okay. All right, and next item, please.
COVID-19 update. Presentations will be made by Fire Chief Wallace and Police Chief Harris.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Deng, members of the city council, and members of the San Gabriel community. I'm Steve Wallace, the fire chief for the city of San Gabriel Fire Department, and I have a relatively brief update for you tonight. We'll get right to the numbers. The LA County total since the beginning of the pandemic of cases now is 2,796,560, with 30,716 deaths to date. In the city of San Gabriel, we've had a increase of 54 cases since we last updated you last Thursday, for a total of 7,244 in the city, and unfortunately, we have to add two more people to the fatality list now for a grand total of 231. A little bit of good news on the horizon, as the data continue to show a decline from the peak of the surge, which was just four to five weeks ago, we are now down to a 1.84% seven-day test positivity rate. And as any death is unfortunate in the county, we are lower there as well with 767 new deaths. And for the first time since last December, we can report that the hospitalizations are under 1,000 for COVID patients, and today's tally was 927 persons hospitalized in the county with COVID. With regards to the fire department, I'm happy to report that we're delivering services at 100% with our normal staffing. Our PPE stocks, which were bolstered by generous donations from the community with councilmember help all through this pandemic, remain ample, and our paramedic supplies are being acquired through normal channels. The other real good thing we have to report tonight is none of our staff is in quarantine or isolation, and that's the first time in a number of weeks. And I'll finish up tonight with masking. As I'm sure you're seeing in the media, a lot of different stuff is coming up and it's getting very confusing. As of today, March 1, the California Department of Public Health has moved from mask mandates to a strong recommendation position. So a strong recommendation for all positions to wear a face covering indoors. Our current thought in the county is that when updated data is released by the CDC sometime on Thursday, that the county will probably have moved into a medium and possibly even a low-risk category, which at that time will trigger a modification of the health officer order. We feel that we'll be terminating mask mandates for vaccinated as well as unvaccinated folks, possibly as soon as Friday. So we'll keep monitoring that. LA County has also put themselves in alignment with the California recommendations for rescinding masks in schools as of March 12. The caveat to that is the districts do have the final say as to when they're comfortable removing masks. And as much as this is all encouraging news, it's not set in stone by any means, and we know this stuff changes by the minute sometimes, so staff will continue to monitor and report back as necessary. And that's the end of my report for the evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
I believe Police Chief Harris has stepped out of the building to be with the officers, but I can give a very brief update on his behalf. We have very similar circumstances to what Chief Wallace reported in the police department, which is that we are at full capacity. We don't have anybody out right now, and all of our operations are continuing as normal. All of the police facilities, like the other city facilities, are open to the public, and it's all good news, which seems like for the first time in weeks, we've been able to report nothing but good news. And so with that, I would turn it over to council for any questions.
Okay, any question from council? No? Okay, all right, next item, please.
Public comment. This is the time set aside for members of the public to address the city council on items of interest that are not on the agenda, but are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the San Gabriel City Council. We have one speaker card this evening, and that's Debbie Kilgore.
Hello, my name is Debbie Kilgore. I've been a resident for, from, in San Gabriel for 25, 26 years. I have a question about two projects that we have going in the city. I'd like to know where we are on them. One of them is the low housing income that we have on West Main Street and Delmar, where that is and where we're going with it. And then also, in 2019, we paid $75,000 for a group called AECOM, who did a study of the Mission District, and one of the major problems they had was that they came out with public parking and the parking in this area. But I'd like to know what's going on with that report. We spent a lot of money, and that is several years ago, and where we are at researching it and what's going on with it. Thank you. Welcome new councilmembers, Ms. Rivera and Mr. Wu.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kilgore. As you know, we can't provide responses because this is not an agendized item, but we will be having an update on the Delmar housing project in a few weeks on our agenda, and we can happily provide an update on the AECOM study to the council and the community.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to address the council?
So no public comments? Would any councilmember like to pull any item from a separate discussion?
I think, are you on consent agenda? I think you have to announce. We're at consent agenda.
Oh, sorry. Okay, next item, please.
Thank you. Consent calendar. All items listed under the consent calendar are considered routine, and recommendations will be approved in one motion unless a member of the city council or public requests separate discussion. We have not received requests from the public to pull any items.
So is there any councilmember would like to pull out the item, separate discussion? No? So do I have a motion for this item?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, just for clarification purposes, that does not include item 4C, which was pulled?
Oh, yes.
At the beginning.
Yeah.
You don't need to change the motion, but I just want to remind the council and the community.
Yes, thank you, Mark. Yes, beginning the, we approve agenda, we already pulled out 4C, okay? Okay, so motion made by the councilmember Menchaca, and the second by councilmember So Chief City Clerk, please take the vote.
Councilmember Harrington?
Aye.
Councilmember Menchaca?
Aye.
Councilmember Rivera?
Aye.
Councilmember Wu?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Deng?
Aye.
Motion passes by a vote of 5-0.
And next item, please.
We have no public hearings or continued business this evening. The next item is new business, item A. Fiscal year 2021 to 2022, mid-year budget update. Finance Director Kohola Kula will make the staff presentation.
Evening, Vice Mayor, members of the city council. Will Kohola Kula, Finance Director for the city of San Gabriel. I think we're just bringing up the PowerPoint right now. Tonight's presentation will be the mid-year budget update, fiscal year 2021, '22. Next slide, please. On June 15, 2022, the city council adopted a general fund budget with revenues and transfers in of $48.2 million, and expenditures and transfers out of $43.9 million, for a net change in fund balance of $4.3 million. During the year, amendments have been made to the budget, and prior to the mid-year budget update, the amended budget had revenues of $48.2 million, total expenditures and transfers out of $44.7 million for a net change in fund balance. During this mid-year evaluation, revenue projections and expenditures are updated based on the trends through January 31, 2022. As of January 31, 2022, revenue is projected to be higher than the As of January 31st, 2022, revenues is projected to be higher than the amended budget by over 4.1 million for total revenue of 52,351,000. Expenditures are also projected to be higher by 1.28 million for total expenditures of 45,985,000, which would leave us with a net change in fund balance of 6,366,000 when we end the fiscal year on June 30th, 2022. On the upcoming slides, we'll take a closer look at the general fund revenues, expenditures, ending fund balance, and projections over the next five years. Next slide, please. Thank you. This slide presents the general fund revenue by major category. The city's largest revenue source is taxes, which makes up 55.8% of general fund revenues. The city's second-largest revenue source is the transfer in from the retirement fund paid for the city's pension costs, which makes up 17.3% of general fund revenues. Those two combined make up 73% of the general fund revenue. At the mid-year projection, general fund revenue is projected to be higher by 4,156,000. The net increase in this projection, in this revenue projection, is driven by taxes, which is projected to be higher by over 1.5 million; intergovernmental revenue, which is projected to be higher by almost 2.4 million; and licenses and permits, which is projected to be higher by 518,000. Transfers in is projected to be lower by 344,000, as the transfer in from the retirement fund is limited to the pension cost that the general fund incurs. And looking at the table on the right, as of January 31st, the city has received over $20 million in general fund revenue, which makes up 38% of the projected revenue for the year. Next slide, please. This slide is a more detailed look at the general fund taxes. The city's largest tax generator is from property taxes. Overall, taxes are higher by 1.5 million. This higher projection is driven by adjustments to the city's local sales tax, which is Measure SG, which was approved by voters in March of 2020. The city's transient occupancy tax is trending higher by $300,000. And the state sales tax is also projected to be higher than the amended budget by over $460,000. On the table on the right, when we compare the actual revenue that we received last year to what we're projecting for revenue for this year, the one-line item that stands out is the city's transient occupancy tax, which is projected to be higher by 923,000 as compared to the prior year. This is primarily due to COVID-19 really hit the hotels and the restaurants hard during that period. The revenue that we're projecting for this fiscal year, this higher revenue, is still below the pre-pandemic levels. Next slide, please. This slide displays the other revenue line items that had significant changes during this mid-year update. The largest one that stands out is the amount of revenue that we will be able to recognize from the American Rescue Plan Act. When we adopted the budget, we projected that we would be able to recognize about 3.75 million. The final rule for the American Rescue Plan Act came out in January, and we realized that we would be able to recognize the remainder of the ARPA funds at 5.9 million, the remaining 5.9 million. So the total increase in the projection is over $2,150,000. Or as we saw on the other slide, our licenses and permits are also projected to be higher. This is driven from higher-than-originally-expected revenues in our building permits, plumbing permits, electrical permits, and overnight parking permits. There were two major projects that occurred during the year, and then just overall, the amount of revenue trending is higher as well. Next slide, please. Moving on to general fund expenditures, this slide displays the city's general fund expenditures by department, and it compares the amended budget to the mid-year projection. The mid-year projection are the amounts after the proposed appropriation increases that are presented at tonight's council meeting. In total, general fund expenditures are projected to be higher by 1,285,000 than the amended budget. The largest individual budget adjustment is the five-year approval of the labor agreement, which added 1.6 million to this year's budget. There were budget savings, especially in the area of vacancies. It's projected that we would save about 1.5 million from employee vacancies. And as part of the vacancies, there were other increases in overtime. There were some contractual costs and separation payouts, which was an increase of 1.2 million. So overall, the increase to the general fund expenditures during the mid-year is 1,285,000. Next slide, please. Now, this slide takes a look at the general fund's fund balance, and it takes a historical look from fiscal year ending 2017 through this year's mid-year projection for fiscal year ending 2022. At the table at the top, we have the beginning fund balance, we have the net change in fund balance, and then we have the ending fund balance. And on the right, the highlighted fiscal year 21, '22, we talked about the positive net change in fund balance of 6,366,000. Adding that to the fund balance that we begin with is we have a projected ending fund balance of 11.9 million. And you can see at the line chart at the bottom, you can just see the historical fund balance of the general fund in 2017, with a fund balance of 2.1 million, going negative for a few years, and you can see the dramatic improvement over the last two years in the general fund fund balance. Next slide, please. Now, this table here, it's a lot of numbers, but this is a five-year projection, five-year forward-looking projection of the general fund. If we look at the Table A at the top, we start with the 21, '22, basically where we are today, our mid-year projection. We take our revenues, our expenditures, the net change in fund balance, the beginning fund balance, and then the total fund balance. And I guess the one item that I would want to point to on the A table at the top is the light blue column of the net change in fund balance. And so you can see, based on our assumptions of revenues and expenditures, that, you know, we'll have the big net change in fund balance for this fiscal year of 6.3, and then moving forward, that we'll have consistent positive net changes in fund balance over the next five years, which would equate to consistently growing our ending fund balance. At the table below B, it breaks out our fund balance between our restricted portion of our fund balance and our unrestricted portion of our fund balance. The unrestricted portion of the fund balance is basically what the city would consider its available reserves. The table also provides the percentage of unrestricted fund balance as compared to general fund expenditures. This is a metric we use to gauge our financial health. In May of 2019, the City Council adopted a fund balance policy with the goal of reaching an unrestricted fund balance percentage of 17% by 2028. As you can see on Table B at the bottom, that we're projecting to meet that fund balance goal by the end of next fiscal year with an unrestricted fund balance percentage of 17.1%. And then it would continue to grow from there. Next slide, please. This is a bar chart of the fund balance for the general fund, for the five-year projection, broken out by restricted fund balance, unrestricted fund balance, and total fund balance. And just a couple of the bars I would want to point out, it's the third bar to the right, on the right, it's the gray bar, if it looks gray to you, and that's total fund balance. So you can just see the trend of the total fund balance that over the years is increasing. And then the orange bar is the unrestricted fund balance, and then you can see visually the trend of the unrestricted fund balance continuing to grow as well. Next slide, please. So from a city financial perspective, our next steps, city staff will continue to monitor city finances and provide monthly financial reports to the City Council. Also, the fiscal year 2022, '23 budget process has begun. In April, a public budget study session will be conducted, followed by individual meetings with council members. We'll be updating our five-year forecast. And then, as we get closer, we'll be conducting a public hearing and a budget presentation in June. That concludes my presentation. I can take any questions you may have.
Does any Council member have the factual question for staff to clarify their report? Chief City Clerk, please read any comments received.
We have no public comment for this item.
Okay, thank you. It's now time for council deliberation?
Vice Mayor, this is John Wu. I do have one question about Page 4. I understand the majority income for our city is property tax. So if we do have those we call the rescue funds, I mean, and you are projecting we will be having a growth on Page 8, that annually, like 17% and 21.6%, 24.9%, are we also expecting some other Rescue Plan Act funds act coming in? I mean, just curious, I mean, because that is a huge fund, and that helped the city, it seems like the number that was getting stronger. So are we having those, like new funds coming in so that you're projecting the numbers higher?
Thank you, Councilmember Wu. The city received over 9.5 million in American Rescue Plan Act funds. As part of the requirements under the American Rescue Plan Act, we were able to recognize a portion of it in the general fund of just over 3.4 million. The remaining portion, 5.9 million, would be recognized this fiscal year, and then, as you can see, that's helping bolster our reserves, and then from there, there will be no more rescue, American Rescue Plan Act funds.
But that's more like a one-time?
It's a one-time, yes.
Thank you.
And I'll just clarify a little more, Councilman Wu, when we do the budget process in April and May, we'll present that same five-year forecast, and we'll show you all the assumptions behind there. We do include some very conservative increases for property taxes over the years, as well as sales tax and other things, so you can see what goes into that growth in the revenue as well as expenditures.
Right, because I, oh, okay, because I know the property tax, that will be increased like 2% or less if they keep their property for long-term, but I forgot about the transactions that are new, selling and buying, and that will be increasing the tax revenue.
Okay, thank you.
Exactly, and for that point, we projected about 4%. Our rates have actually gone up more than that over the past few years, but to be conservative, we've estimated it at 4%.
Okay, thank you.
Any clarified question?
I don't have anything clarifying. Are we now deliberating?
Yeah, okay. I know you move the deliberation and the discussion. Who will be, like, started?
I'll help her.
Okay, Councilmember Menchaca.
Thank you. First of all, thank you so much, Will. I did make some requests regarding the reserve, so I want to thank you for Page 7, where you have the graph. That should be plastered all over our website. I mean, this just shows, you know, that we were committed to increasing our fund balance and to see where it came from. I know, I think only Councilmember Harrington and I were on council at the time when we set that policy, and to see us already pretty much there, I mean, we'll be there next year at the 17%. I just want to thank you and the city manager for really being committed to increasing that fund balance. It is pretty spectacular, if you go back and look at the graph where we came from. So thank you also for putting this together, because that was one of my requests I made in advance, because it is important. We are strong, we have strong cash reserves, and, you know, we passed the policy, and we're going to need it for four years in advance, so thank you for that. I also wanted to make note on Page 6, I'm going to focus on the Mission Playhouse Department. Is the Mission Playhouse, I call it a department, but I believe it's under Community Services. I think we should separate it, something to consider, because the Mission Playhouse, again, spectacular, and I'll go back to the budget on that, but that is something that I know we're going to have further discussion on, actually, at the end of this meeting, there is a special line item, but that's an area that has just gone from, well, pre-COVID, we were close to $850,000 loss. And tonight, if you look at the agenda or the budget, we're at 350. So again, I want to applaud Rebecca Perez and Elias, I forget Elias's last name, I'm sorry, I think it starts with a B, because they turned it around. Even during COVID, we weren't sure what was going to take place. We had a special meeting, we had over 100 comments, and people want us to, again, commit and make this a successful entity. But I think it's important to show the taxpayers, the community, what is taking place with the Mission Playhouse. We've made progress, but we're still at a loss. We're still encroaching in our general fund. So I would like to make that suggestion going forward, as we're going through the budget, to be real mindful what's taking place at the Mission Playhouse. And on Page, let's see, Page 9, the red on the agenda, on the bottom, it says Mission Playhouse, and the very last account number, which is on Page 10, says Transfer in General Fund. So it says 350,000, and then it says Total Mission Playhouse Revenues, it's $1 million, but includes 350,000 from the general fund. So we also had some grants, again, thank you, thank you to Rebecca and Elias. We received $287,000 of grants, which is on Page 11, kind of midway, but that is strictly for capital improvements. That is not for operating. But the capital improvements are, they're a huge list out there. I don't remember exactly what the number is, but I know just the chairs themselves have to be replaced. So I wanted to highlight that effort, applaud it, and let's see. Yeah, again, the Mission Playhouse. And that's all for now, so thank you. I look forward to having more discussion on the budget as we proceed, but thank you for leading us, shepherd us through a very difficult two years, because we will you for leading us, shepherd us through a very difficult two years, because we really didn't, we really didn't know, it was impossible to project. We had so many different variants, and every time we thought we were going to open up, we closed down. But I'm glad you took a conservative approach versus, you know, inflating some of the, the revenues in particular. And I think this is why we've been so successful, this is why it's twenty twenty-two, and we're really in a good place with our cash reserves and our general fund balance, so, so thank you so much for that. That's all. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Manchaca.
I don't have any comments on the budget, I just want to thank Will and his team for putting this together. I think it's, every time, it gets a little more clear. Respectively, what we can see up here, the numbers are well-presented, and I think it's easy to follow, so I really appreciate, and the report was very detailed, so thank you.
Obviously, we're new, so we're just walking to this, but I think that the way that you have your reports is very self-explanatory and very easy for us to understand. Councilmember Wu and I are new to what the city has been going through in the past, but we are very happy that we come into a time where things are picking up and getting better, and definitely, great job. This was, this makes it a lot easier for us to understand, so keep up the good work.
Thank you. Councilmember Rivera. Okay, so, yeah, and I, I also thanks the staff that have this kind of good report. Actually, I just remember when I, two, two years ago, when I got on board, I have a chance to talk to the city manager Mark, say, because that time is where a deficit, so we need a reserve. So I say, from my knowledge, it's at, that time, I don't know their strategy plan for them, Councilmember Manchaca, but I always say that we at least have the seventeen percent, the, the reserve for, for the future, and then like, it's any big loss or bigger project, we needed to do it. So I glad, so based on the, say, that we, we project, projected, it's like two thousand and twenty-eight would be seventeen percent, but I glad see the, this year and until next year, so we already reached this goal. So, yeah, it's thanks to the staff that do the good, good job, it's continue to do it, and hopefully, we have the, like, good financial status. So, and, and even like the evaluation, the public, as they say, hopefully, one day is similar to our neighborhood city, maybe people say, hey, that's a good living, the city, this San Gabriel, that's my hope. Okay, thank you.
I think, do we need to make a motion to adopt the recommended item?
Yeah, yes.
So I'll move to approve the recommendation.
Okay.
Which is, it is recommended that the city council receive and file a mid-year budget update report and adopt Resolution twenty-two dash seventeen, approving mid-year adjustments to the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two budget.
I'll second.
Okay, a motion has been made by Councilmember Manchaca, and a second by Councilmember Harrington. Chief City Clerk, please take the vote.
Councilmember Harrington?
Aye.
Councilmember Manchaca?
Aye.
Councilmember Rivera?
Aye.
Councilmember Wu?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ding?
Aye.
Motion passes by a vote of five-zero.
Next item, please.
Approval of Small Business Assistance Grant Program. Community Development Director Cervantes will make the staff presentation.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, City Council, members of the audience. The intention of this report is to highlight the key elements of the Small Business Assistance Grants Program, and then seek appropriations of funding via approval of Resolution twenty-two dash twenty. At the January eighteen, twenty twenty-two city council meeting, the city council directed staff to launch the Small Business Assistance Program with a defined structure and funding. The total funding allocated toward this project will be capped at a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, which is aimed to provide seventy qualified small businesses with a grant totaling, totaling twenty-five hundred dollars each. The city council also directed staff to utilize the current waitlist of applications from last year's CDBG, CDBG Grant Fund Program. Subsequent to the January eighteenth meeting, staff worked with finance to develop logistics, developed the attached application to the staff report, created a dedicated contact list for the waitlist businesses, developed flyers and advertisements, and developed the program's qualifications and standards. The program will look to go live on April first and sunset on May second. This coming week, staff will reach out to the applicants via the contact list to inform them of the pending program, the program's goals, where to find the application, the qualifications and standards, and also to discuss the process. With the lead time provided by staff with this month, staff hopes to provide enough time for those businesses to renew the licenses prior to the start on April first. Staff looks to manage the submittal process on a first-come, first-served basis. Staff hopes that this will encourage participating businesses to apply early. The program will close at the end of business on May second, or once the city receives seventy qualified applications. Each completed application will receive a corresponding number slash receipt, which will be used in the event the city holds a lottery for the selection process. For reference for the audience and for the city council, the prerequisites and qualifications are found on page two and on page three of the staff report. These qualifications and prerequisites will be addressed towards each application as they are submitted to the city. With that said, staff recommends the city council authorize the Small Business Assistance Program and adopt Resolution twenty-two dash twenty, appropriating the necessary funds for the ARPA Business Grant Program. I'm open for questions.
So I have a question.
Okay, does any council member have the factual question for the staff and the clarify the report?
So we're not going to allow any new businesses to apply? It's just going to be from the three hundred and eighty-one that are waitlisted?
Well, I'll call this the Small Business Grant two-point-oh. We had a prior program that was funded through CDBG funds. This program is aimed to provide additional fundings with less restrictions than the CDBG program. The direction of council at this moment is to outreach to those existing waitlisted applications to, to seek, to, to sort of develop a, a funding program for them. Certainly, a three-point-oh application process or program could, could open the door for other applications. But at this point, the direction is, is, is narrow, sorry, is narrow to include those applications only.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, yeah, I just follow, sorry, okay, I just follow up with the, the council member Rivera, the question. So this time, the lottery is only for the rest of the, the three hundred application the previous, we already, they, they already applied?
Yes, we have a hold of the applications, we have their contact, and so we will reach out to those applications for this program.
The question is, like you say, you explained that no more new applicant?
Not at this point.
Okay.
Not with this, at least not with the direction received by council. We're looking to just reach out to these existing applications that are waitlisted.
And just to, to remind council, that was the direction of the city council, and you asked us to bring this program back. You can vote to change that direction, but that's what we were given on our, in our January meeting.
Yeah, from my, remember, at that, at that time, I, my recommendation is still, should be include the, the new applicant, because I, when I go out and reach out to the, the small business, they say they didn't hear about the, the previous, the applicant, application. So when they hear about it, the two thousand five hundred, the lottery drop, they like continue, if they have a chance to apply. So that time, I, I put on my comment, maybe not so clear, so this time, I just want to remind it, so I think it should be considered their kind of business, because that pandemic, maybe they, we tried to reach outreach to them, but maybe they doesn't open, so they, they don't know that. But I, I hope the city staff, the staff can consideration for the new applicant. I, I agree, the skill, give it to the three hundred, the applicant that have a chance, get the drawing, but is it possible to plus the, the new applicant?
Vice Mayor, I, I just want to let you know, I, I think that night was kind of confusing, I guess, because we had two different votes, you know, we had as high as five hundred thousand, and that was rejected, and then we had a hundred and seventy thousand, and that was finally approved. But I thought during the discussion, and perhaps Councilmember Harrington could, could help out here, I thought we had said that we would give out the one seventy to the existing, but we as council would come back after we go through our budget and see if we can allocate more monies and then open it up.
Okay.
That was my recollection, Aldo, Councilmember Harrington.
I have the same recollection, yeah. We didn't, we didn't preclude another round, we just said for the second round, it would be the ones that have already applied.
Okay.
That doesn't stop us from doing some more, it's just that was for this round.
Definitely bring it up, Councilwoman.
Okay, so, so have the two, two councilmembers already, they're bringing that memory. So before that time, as I think as a council, as a previous, the mayor Liao, it's, I think we maybe both is still want to add on the, the new applicant. So it's confused for the final, the vote, but it's fine, so if related, maybe we can...
Well, we can always bring it up during our budget process.
Yeah.
I mean, there's at least two of you who are interested, I, I believe, in increasing or, or having another round of three-point-oh, as Aldo calls it.
Okay.
And, and so that, that would be appropriate at that time, when we go through our budget to add another line item for an additional grant program, and we can have whatever the criteria is at that time. But I, I think we wanted to be a little cautious and not, just kind of wait to see how, how the numbers are going to, you know, fold out.
Okay, I understand, so that's, do you clear, clarify the question, or just, just?
I think we're at deliberation now.
Okay, so, so let me, let me, yeah, the chief, City Clerk, please read any comments received.
We have no public comment for this item.
Okay, it's now time to council deliberation and the discussion. Who will be like, start first?
I, I had a few things.
Okay.
Just one reminder, I guess. So I, I was asking, you know, the first round, I was asking the question earlier privately, I guess, when we gave out the letters, as council, I don't think we understood what the process was. I didn't know. And when I asked what the process was, I was told, well, the letters were mailed, and that was it. There was no follow-up with the businesses, I guess you would have to rely on accounting if they cashed the check. And I would like to share that information with my colleagues to say, I think we need to do a little more fanfare, at a minimum, a phone call to make sure they got the monies, and if there was any other ways we can assist, because, you know, you have a great department, there are so many services that are being provided, but I don't think our businesses are quite aware of it. And it should be a congratulations, I mean, this is, you know, we as council decided to allocate monies. We need to kind of let them know that not everyone's getting these, but that we are trusting them, that they will use this money to continue on with their business, that we want them to stay. So I would like to see a little more fanfare, you know, congratulations, and, you know, we, I don't know, something more than just, here's your check, you know, goodbye. And I know that with the first round, we had assigned two councilmembers, it was Councilmember, or Vice Mayor Ding and, you know, Councilmember Chen Heilao, who were the committee who kind of assisted, but I don't think you went to the businesses who actually won, I think you went, you just were going to different businesses to let them know about the program. I, I don't think we need a committee, but I, I do think that, that it would be helpful to do more outreach to these businesses that do win, or not win, but who, who are allocated the twenty-five hundred dollars, because there might be something else they may need, and it's something that we're already doing. I know there's so much you already do for our businesses, but they may not know about it. So I think this is a great opportunity for your department, the Economic Development Department, to do an outreach and kind of find out what are the other needs. I mean, obviously, money is always important, but there could be other needs there, too. And so having that conversation, and I know you probably will need an interpreter, because a lot of the businesses, you know, English may not be their first language, but they always have somebody there that does speak English. But I, I just like it to be a little bit more than sending a check. So that, that's just my perspective, love to hear from my colleagues.
I totally agree, everything she said.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Vice Mayor, I have a, a couple of questions to Aldo. So in the, in this report, that there's indicating that www.sangabrieled.com is the place where the applicants can access all the information, and they will be able to know that if they are qualified or not, but especially that you said this is the second round for the first part of applicant last year. So there were fifty-two were awarded for the, for the grant, and there remaining three eighty-one. So that means we may have some people that may close up the business somehow. So in this criteria, that you said there's something that would disqualify them, or they may not eligible for the grant, if they actually been awarded. But besides that, have you requested them to provide the tax return, you know, that for two thousand twenty-one, so prove that they're still in business? Of course, their article of corporation, or maybe the status of their business entity. Do you provide those informations, or, I mean, do you ask, have you asked them for those documents that to prove that they are still eligible for that funds? Or this is just a list, and maybe they close up, but they still have like a working phone number, and you call them up and say, yeah, yeah, why not? Be honest to, you know, what I'm thinking here is twenty-five hundred dollars, that even, there is even not, you know, half of the rent sometimes for the business owner, but it's always, it's better than nothing. So we would like to share with our community that we are supporting the business in our city, but also meanwhile, I think that applications as a business owner is paying the tax to our city. So we want to make sure if this is an implemented criteria, that we will require the applicant to provide. Thank you.
Yes, so, so part of the program does include having some checks and balances, and for one, for starters, it's, my initial kickoff would be to, to discuss a lot of these, these applications with Business License Department, to ensure that they have a, an active business license. And actually, today, I, I did a search of all three hundred and eighty-one applications and found that a majority of them have active business licenses, and a lot of them have actually renewed. And so I've been narrowed that list down, per these qualifications, to see how many were actually going to be able to qualify. And so, so I broke down all the numbers, just to make sure what I'm going to be anticipating when the applications start to come in. But part of the process is going to be a lot of checks and balances, checking sales tax information, checking the business license, for example, looking at how many employees they have, and so a lot of that is going to include a lot of sort of background checks for the applications, just, just to make sure that we deem them complete prior to processing.
I see. And also, I would like to echo my colleagues, Councilmembers Manchaga, that we really need to reach out to our business owners that does not really speak well English, but have you worked with our PIO, that they're able, that she's Clara, she's able to help out, to broadcast, I mean, to announce to the media that in different languages. So more people was, you know, when they read the newspaper, they may get more information about that. I mean, that is a very important resource, information resource for those readers and the business owners, too.
No, absolutely, and, and she's actually part of this plan, so she's going to be helping me with advertisements, flyers, in fact, she helped with the flyer that we have drafted so far, so she is going to be definitely part of this, this program.
Excellent, thank you. Thank you.
I have another, I have a quick question. So the funds that, that are granted to these businesses, I know that they're supposed to be restricted to be used only within the business, I guess, like rent, utility bills, everything, that's kind of explained here. I guess like rent, utility bills, everything that's kind of explained here. Is there a way that we are going to verify that that's the case and they're not being used for personal use? Unfortunately, during this whole pandemic and this loans and grants and everything that was given, there was a lot of people that misused a lot of the funds. So how do we know or is there a process that we're going to use to make sure that these funds were actually allocated for the business and not for something personal?
Well, part of the process, as we discussed, is follow up. That's a huge component of the program is 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 going after those seventy applications and and finding out after the fact, you know, how the funds were used. And so follow up is going to be a huge part of this program. And that process is going to take not only myself, but our staff and possibly Clara as far as advertisement or flyers or what have you. But it's also up to this council to dictate this program. If the council feels as if this is too restrictive, we can certainly lift these requirements. That was one of the issues with with the CDBG program from last year was that was very restrictive. It did require the funds to be used a certain way. If the council feels that that we should get away from that process, we can certainly do that and just issue the funds and and sort of conduct a follow up as to how the funds were affected for that business.
Thank you. Councilmember Rivera, okay. So actually, based on the previous CDBG fund, so we have the the ad hoc committees, me and the council member Chen Hao Liao. So that time we do, I with the Chen Hau now with the city staff, we go outreach the like fifteen hundred, our city, the small business. So the I remember me and the Chen Hau, he go to the west side, the valley and the and the and the last on us. I go to the east side, the valley and the and the and the last on us to 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 the canvas to to promote this business. We use the total four language, English, Spanish, Chinese, and Vietnamese. They, so that's why and the the result come back, it's like almost more than five hundred applicant. So from my knowledge in the marketplace, though, if we even I do the canvas, the the return ratio is like maybe five percent. But actually, they're coming like almost more than thirty percent, a lot of applicant. So I see, I hope, because the councilmember Chen Hau is resigning, so is we still can, if a councilmember is still agree, so we still have continue have the this kind of business development that the ad hoc committee. I I I still wanted to do the this kind of service for especially for the for the small business. Yeah, because the people, I I hope we, I when I I might go also build like a relationship at the the bridge, it's with the business. The city also need a business have to bring the summer revenue for our city, then we can have money to do the pavement or balance the budget, right? So that's the one thing if we can do it. And the second one that I agree, like Councilmember Manchaca say, because this time we have the fund, okay? How, because this is already existing applicant. So for today's discuss, is it possible still add on? Like I I just asking the all the councilmember, we can add on like my suggestion, so open for the new applicant to apply. Because if you have the open for new applicant, so we have the the chance to do the canvas again for the rest of if they don't have the application before. So I I when we do the canvas, we don't need to go to the like previous already submitted application, right? So we can like almost just one thousand, the 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 small business, we can do the canvas. So and 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 let the community know, yeah, our city is care them, care their business. So and also let the community to know, so we just build our city together, right? Everything is together. It's it's like one family, so we can make our communities more better, more safety, yes.
May I respond, Vice Mayor?
Okay.
This is just my opinion, you know, we already have three hundred something and we're only giving out seventy. So I I think we already have a population that I don't think there's a need to continue on and canvass and get more because we already have three hundred. If we were giving out, you know, four hundred, then I can understand. I would just like to recommend that even the ad hoc committee maybe table that when we have our budget discussions, when we decide, if we decide to allocate more money, then revisit how we're going to do the canvas or do the outreach. But I I think we only have seventy and we have three hundred something businesses already. I just think it's a better, for staff, it's better just to focus on that group versus having to kind of open it up again. So that I would just disagree with you.
Okay.
Very respectfully.
Okay.
But but I I just think I I I think we're just at a place where we just need to get this money out and we're going to spend more time trying to find more. When we already have three hundred fifty, I I just want this money to get to our businesses as soon as possible. And so that's just my opinion.
Yeah, actually, your opinion, because you mentioned we need like the pub, the community know more knowledge regarding the this, the the assistant.
Yeah, well, I was actually referring to those who win, who who get the seventy. Those people we need to focus on, because last time they just got a letter. This time, we can not only give them the monies, but we can do follow up, we can learn what are the needs. So when we do it again, and I'm just assuming this council is going to, you know, decide to to do another round of three point O, then we'll be in a better place. Staff will be in a better place to see, you know, is it just money they need? Do they need workshops? You know, we have a successful businesswoman over here, Councilwoman Rivera, who I think would be great to be in a committee that could share, you know, what are the needs of our small businesses? Because these are small businesses. These are not the big businesses, you know, they have very little employees. But at that time, we can be at a better place, we'll know if we can give out more than seventy. And our staff could say, you know, this is what our community needs, because San Gabriel is very unique. It's not like our neighboring cities. We are unique. And I think this is an opportunity for our staff to learn more about our businesses and be more creative, you know, what more can we do? When we gave out those business grants, the first one, so I'll call it one point O, do you remember? We we did a press press conference, I believe you were there, Councilmember, I mean, Vice Mayor Ding, I was mayor at the time. And we did, we brought the media, we had this huge press conference and it was great. And we again, we got more than we needed and then between and then you and Councilmember Chen Hao did the canvassing. So we just got so many so many businesses, but we just can't give out. I wish we could give something to everyone, but we can't. Maybe when we do the three point O, then we can do the big press conference and, you know, maybe offer workshops, like I said. There there's other things we can do for our businesses. But I think at this time, let's just get the monies out and, you know, I think staff would appreciate it, too. Thank you.
Okay, I'm over my, just give to the.
I know you are. I said respectfully, I'm very respectful.
Yeah, well, I respectfully, okay. So if most councilmembers say, well, the add on, it's okay, it's fine. If not, I it's moving forward, it's fine, too. So, yeah. So I just see, yeah.
Vice Mayor, I just have some, you know, just just some thought that I want to just share. But well, I I, you know, I I agree with Vice Mayor Ding regarding that to having more people to participate. Because at this moment that we really don't want to make anyone feel being left out. But I understand that we probably can expedite if we just focus on who they had applied last year but didn't get awarded, then just keep them in the same loop. But I mean, it's just like a lottery. You you just mentioned about this is a lottery type. So no matter what, the seventy business owner, they will get the twenty five hundred. Even that is not really enough if they are still suffering. But this is still, we said, if the lottery system, the previous winner, they win a big prize. But the, you know, the people who got the tickets with no winning numbers, they still need to buy one more ticket to get the next win. So I think that we are just offer more opportunities for the people. I mean, yeah, I understand that those three hundred eighty one people may have last chance to win, but they still in the loop. But if we can include more business owners, then, I mean, yes, we will have another seventy winners this time. Then we may have a bigger pool next time for the grant three point zero. And that is the point that how we can tell them, watch what we are happening in our city. We have some good grants and we possibly will have the next one. So they will just start paying attention that city is working on something. I mean, if this time, I agree that, you know, if we can just focus on this three hundred eighty one business owners, that will make the thing so easy, because you have already reached them, you know, you have to try to call them, contact them regarding the news. But, you know, it's it's really no harm, you know, if we have the grant. For now, they may have last chance to win. I mean, those are like three hundred eighty one, but we have more people outside of the loop. So that's what I'm thinking. Maybe we should have include the new applicants. I mean, even the time is kind of short. Now is March. And you said this is a the application period will be from April first to May second, right? But we still have plenty of time, like four weeks' time. So that is what, that's my two cents and I just disagree, but respectfully. Thank you.
I would just say that our discussion in January, actually, our our biggest issue was the staff time that it'll take, because it takes a bit of time for every single application. We already have the money in place and I and I think it just, it makes sense to just go forward. And if we're going to do a three point O, then we open it up to everyone that hasn't previously been awarded and we then we do another outreach, because we had a successful outreach. But to do the applications is going to take a lot of staff time that really we have other things going on now, so we need to budget that. So that that was that was our discussion back in January. Then I think that's why we went with just the existing pool, because we had a, we had more applicants than we could possibly give out. So we don't, we don't, we didn't want to spend a lot of staff time trying to drum up more business, as they say, when we already had plenty. But thank you.
The the next question is for the for the three point O, the assistant. So the way will be can form that is the for the next one. So that's I want to know to know how long we can, the city staff can.
Sorry to cut you off, Vice Mayor Ding. Our plan was to come back to council with a summary of how the application process went and how many successful applications and whether we were oversubscribed or undersubscribed. And then at that point, recommend whether we would come back with a different program. And at that point, it would be part of the budget process and we could have it programmed into the budget for June the first.
Okay.
Or June the thirty, excuse me, and start the three point O on July the first.
July first, okay. So.
I'd like to hear from Councilwoman Rivera.
I agree, there definitely needs to be a three point O. A lot of businesses are still suffering and it's really hard to recover. But I do respect that they already, the previous city council members already had, you know, a way of like spreading these funds, which is perfectly fine. I still, there's at least they're still getting some. I do agree that there needs to be more contact. This is one of the things that I said when I came to the city council, that I do agree that there needs to be more contact with our small businesses, not just from the staff, but also from city council. I mean, we could sometimes make a phone call and say, hey, you know, we're here, is there anything we can do for you? It doesn't necessarily mean we have to give them money, just like Councilwoman Manchaca said, you know, maybe we can do workshops for them. Maybe we can help them in some other way. So as far as Mr. Ding, that you wanted to maybe put together some kind of a committee, you know, or if even if it's not official, maybe something unofficial, just that we can go out there and just reach out to our businesses. I think that's very important.
This committee we 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 have before, because the Chen Hau.
Left.
Left, so it's only myself in the committee.
Well, I can join your committee.
Okay, welcome.
Thank you.
But I need a need a need a rest of them to agree, okay?
Nothing's unofficial, Councilwoman Rivera. It has to be official.
Okay.
Okay.
It's official, I was invited to join the committee.
Okay, all right. So.
So the staff have direction?
We actually need a formal motion and approval in order to allocate the funding. There's a resolution that would need to be adopted.
Well, I'll move to on the recommendation, which is staff recommends that the city council authorize the SBA program being launched and adopt Resolution twenty two dash twenty appropriating the necessary funding from ARPA grant.
I'll second.
Okay, the motion has made by Councilman Manchaca and seconded by the Councilmember Harrington. Chief City Clerk, please take the vote.
Councilmember Harrington?
Aye.
Councilmember Manchaca?
Aye.
Councilmember Rivera?
Aye.
Councilmember Wu?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ding?
Aye.
Motion passes by a vote of five zero.
Next item, please.
Discussion regarding requests for use of outdoor spaces in the Mission District. Community Services Director Perez will make the staff presentation. Sorry, just waiting for the PowerPoint. There we go.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Ding and City Councilmembers. Tonight, staff is bringing an item to you for discussion and asking for direction regarding requests for the use of the outdoor spaces in the Mission District. Next slide, please. In the past, outdoor spaces in the Mission District have been used for a variety of purposes. The Playhouse Plaza, which is the area around the fountain, has been used for concerts, events, press conferences, and more. During COVID, this area was the primary space for public registering and waiting for their vaccinations. The Playhouse Parking Lot has been used for car shows, a flea market, health fair, and other various events. During COVID, this space housed the drive-through senior meal distribution, drive-through events, and drive-in concerts and performances. And Mission Drive has held community-wide events such as Lunar New Year, Surf's Up, Fall Fun Festival, and Dumplings and Beer. Next slide, please. Aside from these auxiliary uses, the Playhouse, Mission Drive, and the Parking Lot are critical to the operation of the Mission Playhouse, Adult Recreation Center, and Grapevine Arbor. These two city rental venues bring in an average of over eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars per year. When there are events happening at these venues, the Parking Lot is not adequate to accommodate guests for both. As new Mission District businesses, as as new Mission District businesses open, such as Blossom Market, the spaces in the Parking Lot are becoming even more critical. Next slide, please. In recent months, staff has received inquiries and requests from various groups to use outdoor spaces in the Mission District. These can be grouped into a variety of categories. Free, community-wide events with city partners, such as the request from San Gabriel Unified to hold a one-day event celebrating Arts Week. This event would be free and open to the public. There are also free, community-wide events, such as the Hope Lions Club Care Fair, which would be free and open to the public. And events that are free to enter but have paid components, such as the flea market. Next slide, please. We also have had requests for events that have an entry fee, such as a car show, where groups may use this as a fundraiser. And finally, events that require a street closure. Examples of this include a Mother's Day event that we had a request for and a recent event, an arts event for the San Gabriel Valley sponsored by the Getty that staff just recently learned about. Based on the estimated size and scale of these events, they would require a street closure. Next slide, please. In looking at the events proposed and the auxiliary uses of these outdoor spaces, it is also possible to categorize them by timing of the requests. For events requested five to six months in advance or further, the reservation for the outdoor space may prevent the city from renting the Playhouse or Adult Recreation Center for a performance or event. With the average one-day rental revenue of the Playhouse at ninety six hundred dollars and average event rental for the Adult Center at twenty four hundred dollars, this can be a potential large amount of lost revenue. For events requested one to two months in advance, if the Playhouse or Adult Center are still available at that time, they're. are still available at that time, there is a probability that the venue will not be rented and the outdoor space would be available. Next slide, please. City council may choose to look at a fee structure for use of outdoor spaces. A fee structure could be varied based on the requested space and the timing of the request. For events booked five to six months in advance, it would make sense to have the outdoor event cleared by 4:00 PM so that the Playhouse or adult center could become available for an evening event. Staff would recommend a higher fee structure for events booked this far in advance as they would potentially limit use of the venues. For events booked 45 days to one month in advance, it is not as likely that the venues will be booked with a short notice. As such, staff would recommend a reduced fee structure. Next slide, please. For outside groups requesting street closures, this would require significant personnel costs with staff from Public Works, Community Development, Police, and Fire to close the street and monitor the event. An estimate of staff time cost is $10,000 to $12,000. If the city council would like to allow street closures requested by outside groups, staff recommends that these requests come to the council for approval and if approved, be limited to one to two events per year. Additionally, staff recommends that the city council establish a fee structure and implementation policy for these events. Next slide, please. With that, staff recommends that the city council discuss this item and provide direction as to whether the council supports use of the outdoor spaces as included in the report. Additionally, staff requests that the council discuss how these items will be approved and whether you would like staff to bring forward a proposed fee structure. Finally, as mentioned in the report, staff recommends that street closure requests would come forward to the city council for approval. This concludes my report and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Does any council member have the factual question for staff to clarify the point? Okay, Councilmember Wu?
Yes. You just mentioned that this is, the parking lot has been used for the car shows, the vaccination service, and a drive-through like food bank or things. Have that been ever done for, you know, food stand, like a booze or something? Have that ever been considered or it's been rejected for some reason? Like 60, I know there is a very famous group called 626 Night Market things, but, I mean, is that, can that be accommodated food service in, in the parking lot?
So you're referring to the parking lot in particular?
Yeah, to use the outdoor space.
We, we have not, we, one of the requests that we've had is for a group that was interested in doing a vegetarian event and they originally were proposing a street closure. And in talking with them further, it seemed like they might, they might not need the size of a full street closure. So we had suggested to them the possibility of use of the parking lot. In, at this time, it's not been used for, for food service, if you will, or for, for vendors, to be used for, for food vendors. But I, I don't know that it could not be. Obviously, any food vendors like that typically would have to have health permit and have to have, wear washing sinks and those sorts of things. So it would require a little bit more in terms of setup.
I see. So the, the outdoor space include the parking lot, is that correct?
Right. That's one of the, that's one of the main spaces that we've had requests for.
Thank you.
So Rebecca, for the street closures, I was wondering, this is not really a one-size-fits-all because I mean, every, I mean, your example is basically like right along here on Mission. But what about like, I know we've had block parties in the past and, you know, different things. We've had different street closures in different parts of town. So would, I'm imagining that would be kind of like an ad hoc, like depending on what was required of the city? Like we wouldn't have one set fee, correct? It would be a pretty wide range?
So the, the space that we're looking at specifically with this report is, is the space here along Mission, similar to this space that we've utilized, for example, for Lunar New Year. So it's been pretty much the street closure from Mission Road up until Broadway. And, and this group in particular, just because this has been a recent example, the Getty is, as part of their 25th anniversary, they've come forward and they, they are having events in various communities. And they are familiar with the Lunar New Year and so they're equating it to, to that street closure. So this, this is looking primarily in the Mission District.
Okay.
As opposed to a block party street closure.
So when you say eliminating the street closure, it only applies to Mission, like to eliminate it two times? Outside of the city?
That's, that's what we're looking at. And that fee that we pulled together, which was just a fee to kind of present to council is, this is something that, that I'm not proposing that you approve that fee tonight, but that is, that is what, what that was based on.
Thank you.
$10,000, $12,000.
Yeah, this followed Harrington asking the street closing is only for the Mission Drive. But I remember on the, the, the dumpling, the event, we closed to, on the Santa Anita, right? So that's not included?
Typically, that, I, I would consider that part of the Mission Drive street closure. So typically that, typically Santa Anita is closed as well because of through traffic.
That's, yeah, that sounds reasonable because when your street, but this is towards the most street, probably they want to use too. Yeah, okay.
And, and I think even the events where we have not had vendors, for example, on Santa Anita, that, that Santa Anita, because it's such a short stretch there between Santa Anita and Broadway, that area has been closed because you have to have, have it closed through traffic. You don't want people getting down to, to Mission and having to turn around. So that, that stretch typically is closed anyways.
Thank you, Rebecca. So, vice mayor?
I was just going to wait for after public comment.
Okay. And now, the chief city clerk, please read any comments received.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We have a comment from Chastity Jennings Nunez, MD, resident and here commission chairperson. Reads as follows. To the city council members, tonight you are considering agenda item 7C, requests for the use of outdoor spaces in the Mission District. My brief review of the budget shows that the Mission Playhouse's budget, particularly in the last several years, has been heavily subsidized by the city's general fund. Last year, $350,000 was allocated from the general fund for the Mission Playhouse. As one of the most visually stunning and iconic landmarks in our city, I, like most of our residents, agree that we should continue to support this beautiful historic building. The main sources of revenue for our general fund are taxes, specifically property taxes. Revenue from property taxes comprises the largest source of revenue for our city's general fund budget. I ask that the city council members consider that the residents of San Gabriel support the budget of the Mission Playhouse and should receive some type of special consideration concerning the spaces in the Mission District. I specifically mention the Mission Playhouse because the fountain area and the Playhouse parking lot were the areas most commonly used by local residents and nonprofits, particularly looking for outdoor safe spaces for the last two years of the pandemic. I understand that the city needs to generate revenue, but identifying special fees specifically for San Gabriel residents, San Gabriel small businesses, and San Gabriel nonprofits, as well as designating preferred days for these groups during the week when fees would be significantly reduced, would seem to be a very reasonable compromise that generates revenue as well as allows residents to use spaces that their taxes support. This will allow for a more inclusive and equitable use of this space. Thank you very much for your consideration. I have no speaker cards. Is there anyone else wishing to address the council on this issue? Please.
Thank you, Debbie Kilgore again. I don't know how long all of you have lived in the city, but I don't know if you remember when the area you were talking about was actually closed every weekend during the summer because we had all kinds of celebrations there. But the one thing, again, that I mentioned before and when I, when I talked a little bit ago, is parking. If you're closing down the parking lot, you're closing down Mission, where are people going to park? There is no parking and the study shows that, that Mission area has problems with parking. So as you're looking at allowing more and more things to happen here, you have to do something about parking. We need a parking structure or something. And whenever you're bringing all this business in, I live two streets down from Mission Drive and my street is always full the time when we have things. Everybody comes down and they've got a tacky alley to walk down that's, wasn't paved after 25 years. But anyway, parking is the number one issue in that area and you're doing all this stuff. It's great, you'll have a lot of business, but you're also chasing people away because they cannot find parking spaces there. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. And now is time for the council deliberation and the discussion. Who would like to start first?
I'll start.
Okay.
So again, this is a very important topic. It's the Mission Playhouse. And again, I have to applaud Rebecca and Elias, the manager of the Mission Playhouse, for really turning this around from an $850,000 encroachment on the general fund to now to $350,000. There's clearly a need to bring in more revenue, but it's a balance act. You know, we want to maintain the Mission Playhouse, but, but realistically, there is a cost. And so, you know, where's that balance? A couple of things I just wanted to mention is, is number one, I know with the club that I'm involved with, which is a Qantas club, it's a nonprofit, we do rent out some space, but there is no rental fee if you're a nonprofit, but we do pay for staff time. And so whatever decisions we do make, I, I do want that to be in the forefront, that, you know, at a minimum, whatever the staff time is, should, you know, whether you're a nonprofit or not, that should be covered because, you know, it's a cost. It's a cost of doing business and this Mission Playhouse, you know, needs to have revenue. I also wanted to mention how other departments, not only the residents, but other departments are using our Mission Playhouse. And it might take a little more accounting and it's just geography, you may be moving it from one department to another, but I think somehow the Mission Playhouse needs to monetize itself with other departments to show that it, it has such value, but we're not doing that, you know? And I think that's important because the $350,000 deficit is not a true picture. The, the Mission Playhouse gives so much more, but we're not monetizing it. And so I would like to see something along those lines to assist. I, I believe tonight, the way I'm understanding, there's no vote. It's just the council is deliberating. We're making recommendations and hopefully there's three of us that agree on some of these items to help the staff bring it back where we then will make a vote. I, I do like what has, what I see here, which is a fee structure of some sort. Clearly, five to six months in advance will give everyone a better fee. You know, you're, you're looking at $1,500, $2,500. And then events booked 45 days to one month, you're, you're looking at 800 to 1,800. And then events requesting street closure is much more. But again, you know, looking at the staff time, you know, $10,000 to $12,000 might sound like a lot of money, but that's so much staff from fire, police, to community services is, is being required. I would like those type of events because I don't think there's that many. I would like to see that as recommended for council, for it to be brought back to council. We're looking at outside events, maybe two, maybe three at most. Typically, our outside events have always been internal, you know, whether it's the Lunar Festival, beers and dumpling. But overall, I, I do agree with the possible fee structure, what the staff is recommending. But I wanted just to take that a step further and see if there is other ways that not only the community, but other departments also recharged and so, and, I mean, I hate to say that, but it just, again, it just to show the value that the Mission Playhouse, because it, every single year, there are people, community members, who don't understand why we're so committed to this Mission Playhouse. You know, that's the reality. You know, the monies could be used for so much more, whether it's public safety or, you know, social services. But, you know, I know I believe and the council at the time when we had these discussions believe that this is something of value and we want to keep it. It is owned by the city. And, but we need to be smart. We need to find ways to, to make this sustainable and, and to show to even those naysayers, those who don't want us to keep it, those who want us to sell it and they're, they are out there, that we can do this and we've made such strides. You know, we, we've, we've made so many changes and, you know, it's, it's coming to fruition, you know? It's, it's getting there. But we, we still, there's more to, to do. And I think this fee structure could finally get us to at least a break-even point. I'm not even looking at making a profit, just at least break even. And, and I think we have the right people in place with Rebecca and Elias. So, so thank you for bringing this. But anyway, so those are my thoughts, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Manchaca? Okay. Councilmember Wu?
Okay, so, yes, Rebecca, thank you so much again for the report. I have one question. Do we have any plan to repave the parking lot before we, as we can discuss, you know, to use or to rent it out, our parking lot?
And Councilmember Manchaca is smiling under her mask, I can tell, because this is one of the items that she, she has brought forward many times.
Yes.
We, we do have, we, we have had discussions. Our, our Public Works Department has done an even more recent survey of the parking lot and, and provided an estimate of what that, what that looks like. And I believe, and I'll turn to our city manager, but I believe that we will possibly be bringing that forward to the city council as part of our budget discussion this year.
Okay.
Rebecca said it perfectly. We have a couple of funding sources that council in the past during budget process has wanted to earmark for paving. And so my recommendation during the budget process will be that our first year of using that funding source, which is from our Athens contract, that we don't earmark that for paving for the Mission Playhouse. And then in the future, we would put that towards street paving to sort of take care of the impacts of the trash trucks that are driving through the city streets. But for this first year, we can donate that or, or use that for that parking lot purpose. But that'll be coming back as part of the budget process here in the next few weeks.
I'm sorry, junior, can you let Councilmember Wu know what the dollar amount is?
Thank you very much. Yes, we've estimated the parking lot cost would be about $300,000 to pave. So that's the reason we haven't been quick to pave it in the past. That is quite a bit of, of money. But when we had our council approve a new contract with Athens, they have a franchise fee that they pay or an impact fee that is about $350,000 and increases every year by CPI. So, and, and when we adopted that fee, Vice Mayor Ding was very adamant that as soon as we can afford it and we have a surplus, that rather than just have that go into the general fund and get lost in all of our other spending, that we start to put that towards street paving, which is one of the impacts of the trash trucks on the city. So my suggestion would be that we sort of learn to live without that by putting that towards a specific project and then in the future, that could go towards paving more streets or alleys.
Well, thank you. I think the safety is priority. So anything that if we are going to use this parking lot, and I think that is, we, we are holding a huge liability for the people who use the place and we don't want people to get hurt, that, you know, a, a well-paved parking lot will be the really good idea. And the second thing is, I really appreciate Debbie that she raised that question. That was the question I have too. Because a couple of years ago, I have a, you know, I've been attracted, I went to one of the huge event that using the, you know, that group, they, they rent a parking lot in Pasadena and they call the Night Market. That brings, that brought a lot of Asian foods and food stands there. And because they didn't have a good parking structure, they do have a lot of police officers stand on the street and try to direct, try to, you know, you know, make sure that traffic will, flows will be smooth, but it didn't work out. So when I got stuck there, I stuck there for two, three hours. So when I got stuck there, I stuck there for two, three hours. And that was a very popular event, but very upset experience because the parking issue, the traffic, that has impacted the local community and including the people who participate that event. So I think that is a very major things. You know, a couple of days ago, I spoke to the city manager about the parking issues because some of the resident complains to me that we had a really bad, you know, terrible machine that can only use the $1 to, you know, $5. And, you know, it broken, you know, a couple of days ago in front of the police station. Then they have to rent to the, you know, closing market. There's another one, and that is still very old and very outdated. So that's why I have to, you know, I have an idea, maybe I will seek for our colleagues to support, that my position is I will be, you know, supporting to open the place, you know, then generate income. But there is a contingency. We need to make sure that, you know, there's not an impact to our local residents. And also, we have, you know, because we want the people to rent the place, they are happy, the people they invited, the vendors are happy. Of course, that will be making sure that our city will generate some income, maybe not a big money, but at least we can break even. And, but we don't want to, you know, jeopardize any party that related to the event. So I would personally say that we can actually move on that direction, but we have to take care of two issues first, which is the parking lot has to be, you know, safe and ready to use. Another one is the parking. We have to make sure that we will have enough parking to accommodate that any visitors from other cities. And we really want them to come to the city and generate more tax money for our city. But we also do not want to waste too much police force. They have to come out here and take care of all the traffic issues. That is not the purpose, because there is a staff expenses, like a $10,000 each time. I believe there will be more if we have the traffic issue, and we may need to, you know, we need more police officers come out just to take care of the safety things. So that will be another expenses. So that is my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, my turn.
Anybody.
Okay, thanks to Rebecca, to prepare this proposal. I know the last two years, the pandemic, and Rebecca did a great job for our Mission Playhouse, how to use it. Even at that time, some rumors say we maybe closed the Mission Playhouse, but finally, they know, the community know that we continue to use the Mission Playhouse, and Rebecca did a great job, and have like a dance, dancing competition, and the rest of a lot of the event. Because I know these two year, I have a more chance to communicate with Rebecca regarding the space rent. And because at that time, we don't have like a parking law, we don't have like a guideline how much they charge the, and how much we can charge the staff time. So Rebecca, I want to bring out, I think I talked to Rebecca, it's more like transparency. So we have set up the fee for the public note, how much we will be charged, because too many people apply. So you have to have the balance, who can qualify, right? If everybody is saying, I remember last year, it's parking law use fee, it's no charge, but staff time need a charge, right? So for the, so my question is for the, this is like a 15, how much, 15,000, it's, 1,500 for the six months or five, six months or six months before, it's, that's include the staff time or just the basic fee?
So first off, I'll just say that those are just recommendations from staff, and those aren't, those aren't figures that we're asking council to approve that tonight. Again, tonight is just a discussion, and that's just an example. So the only fee that we currently have set for the parking lot is a $12 per spot charge.
Oh, okay.
Based on the number of spots we have, it's $2,088.
Okay.
So, and we've not had that fee established for groups. So for example, if a producer comes in and wants to use the Mission Playhouse, and they say, I don't want my guests to be charged for use of the parking lot, they can pay that fee.
Okay.
And which would waive the fee for their guests to be charged. But we've not had a fee set just for use of the parking lot. And you're correct that with the pandemic, we've had so many more requests for outdoor events and for outdoor use. That fee would not include staff, that would just include the parking lot. That would be the recommendation. And if, because for example, if they were to want use of the restrooms, that would be an additional, an additional fee to have restrooms and have staffing available for the restrooms.
So this 1,500, do you need a plus the staff fee?
If that was a need. That may not be a need. There may be a group that wanted to use just the parking lot and bring in porta potties or something for their, for their guests. So that may not be a need, but that was the recommendation, was just a fee for use of the parking lot. And then if they wanted staff, if they wanted restroom usage, that would be separate.
Yeah, another thing, I just want to help the, even we have the Line Club, Hope Line, San Gabor Line, Hope Line Club, when we do the Care Fair, yeah, we also consideration, Rebecca helped me to consideration the parking issue. So actually, our event, I remember, we just used the half area for the, for the event, for the Care Fair event, and the half area still can use for the parking, and some areas for the reserved parking. And plus, Rebecca helped to go to the medical center, the extra parking space, just like a consideration for the neck, the neighborhood, they, I don't, we don't want to like, I think Rebecca has already did a good job to consideration this parking issue. But some, I have, I think probably I have to understand each other, because we have an event, you have to say you cannot, you don't, cannot parking over there, otherwise you don't, you straightly just say no more event, right? But I think the event, sometimes you have to see that both sides, okay? It's, yeah, it's really maybe bother the neighborhood, the parking, the issue, but maybe also looks like bother like business, like restaurant, that they are issue. But some business, like especially for a restaurant, probably help them bring the business. If they have an event after that, you know, they can go to a plaza market, or before like they have the Lunas, the restaurant, maybe help them business too, you know, the generate our, the taxes, the revenue too. So how can we like, hopefully, we have the discipline, have the discuss study, we can balance, so we, how to use our public space to, actually, I think it's, first of all, I don't think that we just want to generate the revenue for, because of Mission Playhouse for the public use. But because too many people apply, so we have to set up some guideline, the law, to let the people to apply, but plus have the revenue too. But the main purpose, I think, is just to regulate, help Rebecca to, how to, when they, how to processing this application. From my understanding, is that right, Rebecca?
So that's one of the items that we're bringing forward to council is, for the items, again, staff or street closures, we would recommend that those would come back to the council. And because, like you're saying, that does impact such a large area, it impacts traffic, it impacts the businesses. I believe that the businesses along the Mission, in the Mission District do get some additional business, but it's also a challenge for them, right?
That's true.
If the street closure happens, pardon me, if it's a day, an evening event, the street closure has to happen during the day, and so that impacts their business during the day. The, you mentioned the hospital parking lot, and we've been very lucky to have that available, but that's not always going to be available. Typically, it is available in the evenings and on weekends, but that not, may not always be available. And so I think if the council were to review, were to be okay to review street closures in the future, I would recommend that we just limit those to a certain amount. Obviously, we do have some street closures for our own city, community-wide events. So I think we would want to limit those because they are so impactful to the Mission District, to traffic flow, all of that. But with regard to the parking lot and the plaza, if council wanted to have those reviewed by staff, we definitely would want to have a policy and guidelines for those, and so that we would have a policy to follow as we approve those.
Okay. Thank you, Rebecca. Yeah, it's street closing, from my experience, for the, like, beer and dumpling, it was for the booths, they can make, it's, the line, it's very crowded, okay? But I go to the, like, local restaurant, they're very good business, and I go to their restaurant inside, it's hard to find a place to sit down too. So, yeah, that's meaning that's good for them, but, but the reality, for the, maybe some businesses not really help. I think when we do the city closing, city, the event, maybe we also, can we have the some like, communicate with the local resident and the business, let them know first, so if they can bring the public comments, so what we need is consideration to help our community. Yeah, that's, so my, also my suggestion too.
Vice Mayor, just on the parking lot situation, Rebecca, can you just clarify which parking lots are actually available? Because my understanding, it's the one next to the old 261, then we have the medical, but also the Mission, San Gabor Mission High School, the parking lot across the street. Don't we have access to that too, if need be?
So the parking lots that we, that the city owns are the Park and Ride, which is the one that you're referring to, next to Mission 261, and the Mission Playhouse parking lot. Those are the only city lots that we have available. In the past, for events, and especially large events like Lunar New Year, dumpling and beer, those sort of events, we have also requested use of the hospital lot, and it's just the lot right there with access off of Broadway. So at Broadway and Santa Anita, kind of that northwest lot. And we have utilized the high school parking lot as well. And those, I'll just say, are not going to always be available to us, but we have been able to utilize them in the past. The Mission High School parking lot is not a very large space, and so in the past, I know we've used that for vendor parking, because typically the vendors are coming early in the morning, and all of them are leaving later in the day, so it's not traffic, continual traffic in and out. The hospital lot is a little bit, a little bit easier for that.
Is there a fee to those?
We have not had a fee for them. We do have to get a certificate of insurance, and I actually have tried doing it before, but I will try again, working with the CEO at the hospital to get kind of an ongoing agreement, so that we don't have to request that. We would still have to request use of the parking lot each time, but not have to get the certificate of insurance each time, because it becomes a little bit staff-intensive.
Yeah, because I was just going to suggest, if we do have outdoor kind of events, having those parking lots on the flyer, just so people know where they can park, aside from parking on the residential areas, you know, here, these parkings are available. Most people don't know that, and so that might be something to add somewhere, you know, when they sign the agreement, to let their vendors or their customers know, you know, what the options are.
Right. And typically, and I believe that staff included that cost. So I know when we were looking at the street closures, if an outside group were to do it, we did include cost for notifying businesses and residents, which we typically do as well. And we included public works time, which would also include then putting out some of those event parking signs. So that's where that $10,000 to $12,000 figure came up, and we would want to finalize that figure and make sure that we're definite, and would need to figure out. I know, for example, the Getty event is looking at a two-day street closure, so we would need to figure out if that's, if that's a per-day cost or what the per-day cost is.
I meant like the Getty would tell their customers, not us, but, yeah, they would tell. That's what I meant.
Thank you. Thank you.
I bring in the, another question, it's, your fee is to have set up the five, six months advance, and 45 days, and then one month, but more advance is more expensive, from my understanding, because they already reserved this spot. So that's why you charge more. Is that right?
The thought, the thought with charging more is that, well, to advertise their event, but five to six months, there could still possibly be requests coming in for use of the Mission Playhouse and/or use of the Adult Recreation Center. So essentially, we are, by allowing an outside group to come in, we are essentially preventing possible use of the Mission Playhouse or the Adult Recreation Center. So I also had a recommendation in the report that any events that utilize, for example, the parking lot or the plaza would also need to be cleaned up and out by four o'clock so that we could also have the possibility of having an evening event at the Playhouse or at the Adult Recreation Center. But that was the reason for the larger amount, because likely, if a group were to come forward, for example, 45 days out or a month out, and the Playhouse has not been rented, or the Adult Recreation Center has not been rented, it's less likely that we will have something come, a group come forward and to plan their wedding or an event at the Playhouse with such a short timeframe. If that makes sense.
Okay. Just by the way, if, no matter this two, time period, is there any way, if they already reserve it, if, just in case some reason they cancel it, is there any penalty or no penalty?
We would need to come back with that policy. So basically, tonight, we're asking for council to discuss the item and identify if you are, would like staff to come forward with a fee structure, and we would need to discuss whether or not there would be a penalty fee or not for cancellation.
Okay. For the, for the street closing event, so based on your say, it's a case-by-case, right? Let the council to approve. Is that right?
That would be our recommend, that would be staff's recommendation, is that that would be something that would be brought forward to the council for approval, and so that it would be a case-by-case basis, and the council could base that information based on what the group brings forward.
Okay.
Obviously, staff would need to bring that forward on behalf of the organization.
And also have the time range, they have to, like, five or six months before, or maybe one month before?
My recommendation would be that we would want probably at least like four months before, because there's going to be time, obviously, there's time to get the item on the agenda, there's time for staff to review, there would be multiple departments that would need to be pulled in on that. If council were to approve the street closure, the group is going to want to advertise their event. So I would say at least four months, if not, if not longer.
All right. Thank you, Rebecca. Thank you, the good job. Okay. So we don't need to vote, right?
No, if I can just summarize, Mr. Vice Mayor, I'm hearing that council's in favor of bringing a policy back with potential fee structure, and we'll, we will detail how those fees were arrived, so that when we do ask for decision, council will understand what goes into those fees, and we'll bring those back at one of our future meetings, probably in the April timeframe, something like that.
Okay. Thank you. Next item, please.
City Council Reorganization. The city council will now select a mayor and vice mayor who will serve until the reorganization following the November 2022 general election. Please note that ceremonial oaths of office in celebration of this event will take place at the next regular meeting on March 15th. As the position of mayor is already vacant, I now declare the office of vice mayor vacant as well. The floor is now open for nominations for the selection of mayor. Are there any nominations for mayor?
I would like. I was going to nominate Councilmember Ding.
And I will second that.
Councilmember Ding has been nominated for mayor. Are there any other nominations for mayor? Are there any other nominations for mayor? Okay, hearing none, I close the floor to nominations and declare that Councilmember Ding is selected as mayor by, by acclamation. Congratulations, Mayor Ding. I will now turn the meeting over to you to conduct the remainder of the meeting and the selection of vice mayor.
Select the vice mayor. The floor is now open for nominee for the select vice mayor. Are there any nominations for the vice mayor?
Yes, I'd like to make a nomination, but I wanted to make sure the person is, is interested, based on previous nominations, they're not always interested. But I'd like to nominate Councilmember Harrington if he so desires.
I'll accept. Thank you.
I second.
Thank you. If none, okay, here, I close the floor nomination and declare that Councilmember Harrington is elected vice mayor for acclamation. Vice Mayor Harrington.
Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations, Mayor Ding.
Next item, please.
Thank you, Mayor Ding. We have no public comment for the second section unless someone here wants to speak.
Thank you.
Comment.
And then, number nine, city manager, city manager report.
Thank you, Mayor Ding. I'm happy to say Mayor Ding. We finally get to say that normally.
On purpose.
On purpose. I didn't make a mistake this time.
Okay.
I do want to congratulate you and Vice Mayor Harrington and just remind everybody that we will be in this building again in two weeks for our March the 15th meeting. And then if things work out, we'll be back in the council chambers in April and in person from there forward.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ma.
Thank you.
And number 10, council comments and conference meeting report. Will we start?
I have none.
Okay.
But just wanted to, just thank everyone for, for being here. I know we kind of lost the lion's share of the crowd with our police department, but I'm glad that we were able, we were finally able to recognize all the individuals who came on board two years ago now, who really helped us just continue on and doing the good work at our police department. So that was all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Menchaca, right?
I'll just say thank you to staff for all the work that was put into this. Just appreciate it. Thank you to my colleagues and looking forward to our next mask free meeting.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Harret.
Thank you. I would like to congratulate again, Mayor Dean and Vice Mayor Harrington. And thank you, my colleague, that this is my first city meeting. I really honor and I'm so happy and thank you so much for the city staff stay here for that long. But this is really a productive meeting and it's really my great honor to serve as a city members, city council members for San Gabriel. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wu.
I just want to say congratulations, Mayor Dean and Vice Mayor Harrington. And to the staff, this was our first time sitting here. You guys are amazing. Keep up the good work. Everything is very easy for us to understand because of your hard dedication. So I look forward to working with all of you. And to all my group here and my team, yay. We did it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rivera.
Sorry, I didn't congratulate, so let me do that. The newcomers are teaching me here. Of course, congratulations, Mayor Ding.
Thank you.
Thank you for being there when we had, you know, two councilmembers resign. You really led us through a very difficult process, but we did, we, we got accomplished so much in such a short period of time, thanks to your leadership. And congratulations to Vice Mayor Harrington, our most senior person here now, inexperienced. I'm next to you now, inexperienced, but, but congratulations to both of you.
Thank you. Councilmember Menchaca, I tried to practice. Okay, yeah, my turn, yeah, it's, it's, it goes through the last almost two months, I, it's, it's really like, for me, it's a big challenge for me. So, but here, I use this opportunity to thank all the city staff to help the, we still moving forward for our city running and plus our previous, another two council member, with three council member, we go through the, this high, the new, new two, appointed two, a new council member. We like did a very smooth C job and finally, it's really congratulation, the two council member on board, the councilmember Rivera, councilmember Wu. So I feel it's, we have, we are, we, our city is a great team to work together, to, with the city staff, we, and with our community member too, to moving our San Gabriel city, moving the right, right direction. Hopefully, this today looks like a full, come back to full council. I really happy we have the, like, this today, the discussion. So, and, and by the way, it's congratulation, the councilmember Harrington is the vice mayor. Okay, so just use this opportunity and congratulation, these two new councilmember used this time. So, and then we, we hopefully, the, on the March 15th, we have the official new organize, reorganization in the team, work together and discuss our city issue, right? Okay. And thanks all, thank you everybody. And, and no closing section, meeting adjourned at 9:20. Hopefully, good time to back to home, take a shower. And sleeping.
I'm freezing.